Good evening. Welcome to the Penfield Board of Education meeting for November the 3rd. This meeting is called to order at 7:01. Please rise and the clerk will lead us on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
It is recommended that the board approve the November 3rd agenda as submitted. May I have a motion and a second that the agenda will be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. As recommended, that the board approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the October 20th meeting as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee of Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee of Preschool Special Education, and the acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent of Personnel Changes. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. And the treasures report. It is recommended that we have a motion that the treasures report, including the cash report, the general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending September 30th, 2020, be approved. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are at special reports, and I'm happy to have Lisa Latton, who is our Monroe One Bowses representative, here to provide an update. Thank you for joining us, Lisa.
Hello.
Hello.
I told Dr. Putnam I don't come out on election night for just anything. So, good evening. Not much to report today, other than to report that our numbers are still really good. We, I checked the dashboard, I think at 5:54, and we still are at 3:00. And that's really a hats off to our students who are doing amazing with masking and compliance and just really not having too much difficulty with that. The teachers and the administrators have really problem solved when the kids have run into problems with masking, and they've been able to resolve those issues quite quickly. There have been some hiccups, but it's nothing that the teams haven't been able to troubleshoot and find amenable solutions to. One thing that continues to be an area of focus, which I think I reported on last time I was here, was just really concentrating on the students and the staff and their emotional needs at this time. I think that everyone is feeling a little COVID fatigue and just keeping in mind that the protocols that are in place, which can be cumbersome at times, are really keeping us safe. And just reiterating that to the students, and the staff is doing a nice job with that as well. I don't have anything else to report, unless you have specific questions that I can try to answer.
Board, any questions? All right, great. Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming out and giving us these regular updates, and we look forward to asking you again, again, very soon.
Great. And if there's anything in particular you're looking for me to report on in the upcoming sessions, just, you know, let me know, and I'm happy to put that together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other, the second special report will be the Elementary School Action Plan. I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam to lead that.
Thank you. So we have with us tonight our four elementary principals. Scott Herschler, our Scribner principal; Stephen Kenny, our Cobble's principal; Mark Nelson, our Harris Hill principal; and Marcy Ware, principal of Indian Landing. And so they put together a amazing presentation for their school action plans. And as a reminder for the board, but also for the community, I look at this as an opportunity, and I hope they agree around sort of this team mentality where they do work together. Their action plans are all different, because every one of our elementary buildings is a unique culture and a unique building, but there are some real common themes across all four. And so I just appreciate the work that they've put into this, and I'll turn it over to them.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see if this works.
I know I read names, but if you don't mind introducing yourself for the viewing public.
Is someone controlling the remote?
Oh, is it turned on?
Hey.
How about that?
There we go.
I went too far?
Are we on here?
I gotta put him in, I guess.
All right, so.
All right. Questions, anybody? That was great.
No problem. We'll get back here. And Sharon, are you able to?
Sharon, I can, yeah, Sharon can fix her.
Okay, no problem. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Herschler, principal of Scribner, and on behalf of my fellow principal friends, thanks for having us tonight and for your collective support. What I was going to say next is, if you can look at these pictures, they speak volumes about how much we missed our students. And these pictures are of the four elementary principals with our students, and again, it just speaks volumes with the smiles that we collectively have on our faces. We so missed them over the last eight months, and it's great to have them back, whether it's through a screen, virtually, or in person. As we all know, this has been a very tough eight months on many levels for everyone, and it continues to be. However, we have persevered, evolved, and have come together as a district and Penfield community to make quality instruction in our environments, quality and possible for all of our families and students. I believe that together, we have a common understanding that everyone is doing their very best job that they can. That's so important, and it's shown every day as I'm out with parent pickup, drop-off, meeting the buses, unsolicited feedback by parents and families who are demonstrating their patience and our understanding, which is mutually respectful and greatly appreciated. I'd now like to share our first school action plan slide, which highlights our shared beliefs and consistencies among the four elementary buildings.
Here, can I comment? I'm sorry.
So before, let's, we're going to hold that for a moment, and I'll just comment, because I just am very impressed with our principals, who, just like our teachers, have to shift on a dime here and teach when the smart board goes down, when the Zoom goes down, when the Microsoft Teams goes down, and try to find a way. So you did a really nice job with that, Scott.
Thank you.
And I'm up here counting with my fingers that it really has been eight months since we closed, you know, seven and a half months there. Friday, the 13th, was the last day we were officially in school, regular, full-time, which is of March. So, that's amazing. And this is me buying a little bit of time.
I'm almost there.
All right. Even here in the board level, we run into glitches, but notice how calm we are.
Yeah. Except for sharing.
We're all human.
Pretty sure some shares can affect you.
It's so quiet.
It's gonna be.
It's so much more peaceful.
I was gonna say, so. All right. Take it, Jim. I forgot to put that whole question in. Sorry, Scott.
That's fine.
Problem. If you're watching at home, now's the time to maybe run out and vote if you haven't done so. The polls are still open a little longer. You know, we'll be ready to go with our time to get back.
And I'll continue here of.
So yep, your pictures are up, so you're good. If you want to go back and show maybe a couple of those where you started.
There they are.
All right.
Speaks volumes, for sure. Play hard, learn hard, work hard. That's what we do. And as I was mentioning earlier, you know, starting back up was rough, and we all had learning curves, even though we've been in these different situations since March. And I feel, in taking the pulse of the district and the schools in general, that we've hit a little bit of a rhythm. And again, that's because of our collective hard work, all the time spent by everyone in the district, and all the work that families and parents and loved ones are doing with their children at home, too. So I think we're in a good place. We've hit a stride, and there is certainly a mutual respect that I feel district-wide. So as far as our action plan is concerned, we're steadfast in our belief that continuing to provide a consistent elementary journey for all students in the Penfield Central School District is imperative. We also celebrate each of our schools' culture. While we are consistent, we're also different in different ways, which I think is not, which is healthy, actually, while we maintain consistency in our academic programs and promoting fiscal responsibility for Penfield. The other thing is that we all think and believe in our hearts that students, all students belong to all of us, and that provides accountability, especially given our current models of learning and instruction. While we're counting on each other, you know, via virtual teachers and others, that our cohorts are combined in some degrees throughout the district, so we need to be consistent and hold each other accountable to make sure that all of our students across all four buildings are getting the same access to quality education. And we also redefine in supporting the team concept with all of us. So we're in this together through thick and thin, and I'm just proud of our fellow elementary principals and the district and the community for taking the high road and supporting one another together. Without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Kenny. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to do questions now, or do questions at the end here?
I think we'll do it at the end, because they're going to go through, that's the intro, and then they'll go through their slides.
Good evening. I'm Steve Kenny. I'm the principal at Cobble's Elementary School. Thanks for having us tonight. My responsibility is to briefly present the first goal, which is each Penfield school will provide a safe, engaging learning environment, promoting progress toward academic achievement and excellence, as well as the development of the whole student. I think it's important for us to recognize the board's consistency and commitment to this goal. It allows us to gain traction and really gain some momentum towards achieving the development of the whole student, so thank you for that. Thank you for the consistency. It's very important. It's allowed us to be thorough, to think ahead, and to really think about the best ways to promote the whole student in our building. So I'm going to go over some things that have a consistent approach across the district, but you will notice that in some of these goals and some of these action steps, you will see the culture for each building bubble up, and that's on purpose. We want to recognize our cultures, but also recognize that we are staying consistent to the goal. So the first one has to do with implementation of best practices in social-emotional learning. As many of you know, that has been a very important and significant priority for us at the elementary level. And with the reopening plan and guidelines from the New York State, SEL was a very important priority for the New York State Department of Education and then for us as school buildings. So many of us have embraced different practices, from peace circles, morning meeting, and then all of us consistently using our second step curriculum to make sure that we're teaching kids what it means to be active listeners, to be positive members in the community, in the classroom community, in the school community. So that's a consistency across the district, but we're all sort of interpreting how we want to do that in a little different way. One of the other things that we've been really going after, after as a leadership group, is the review of research on what it means to implement an SEL program, SEL practices. So we have been having conversations about that, bringing those conversations to our buildings, and as a result, we've been diving into some research on what are the best ways to promote SEL in our buildings. We work with some outside specialists and have also shared some information with our staff. And we're seeing some of that research that we've been having conversations about with our staff come alive in our classrooms. Some of our positive recognition and reinforcement via school-wide is taking place in a little different way in each of our buildings. Harris Hill has Hercules, who is certainly the pioneer of Walk the Talk, and that is their program that they use. Indian Landing has Partners Pride. And each school does it a little differently, but we're trying to teach those character traits of caring, integrity, responsibility, and self-discipline, oh, and respect. So each of us are using a different program to help do that, but some of the core concepts remain the same. And last but not least, we have a couple really important initiatives moving along in the district that have impacted how we approach the development of the whole student at the elementary level, specifically around some PD on the three dimensions of equity in education. As you know, that's a very important topic. So we are talking about multicultural teaching, social justice, and culturally responsive practices. And then last but not least, one of the things that we do on a regular basis in each of our elementary buildings is work very closely with our mental health staff to make sure that we are meeting the needs, the diverse needs of all of our kids. Our kids are coming from, off of an eight-month hiatus from what we typically consider school, and we know that that has impacted our kids and our community. So we are making sure that we're wrapping our arms around each and every one of our kids and having regular conversations with our mental health staff to make sure that our kids are getting what they need.
Okay. Next, I'd like to have Marcy Ware, principal of Indian Landing, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. I'm Marcy Ware, principal of Indian Landing. Thank you, Steve. I also am going to continue to talk about goal number one, which is broken up into two parts. Steve talked about development of the whole student. I'm going to be talking about the academic achievement portion of that goal. So we spent countless hours over the summer working as a team, as an elementary team. We spent time with Jim. We spent a lot of time at the Harris Hill conference room. I ate a lot of Mark's snacks. He's very well-stocked. We spent countless hours together this summer, working as a team, to plan for the school reopening. We were, at that time, and we continue to be, committed to creating an instructional model that was responsive to the guidelines around the COVID-19 pandemic, yet also responsive to the needs of our students and families. We heard that information that had come from last spring. We were very cognizant of that, and we were trying to make a model that would serve our students well. So we've implemented, as you know, instructional models that emphasize the following. We are doing our district-wide implementation of our curriculum through two instructional models, a hybrid learning model or the virtual learning program, which is 100% remote. And we're trying to do everything we can with keeping all aspects of our program. It's challenging. It's not perfect, but we're working really hard, and we are committed to putting forth as much of that district curriculum as possible. We're doing a large part of that through Microsoft Teams with the virtual learning, and we've been working with teachers to coordinate materials and lessons and using that as our main platform for communication with families. Again, a change from last spring, something we really focused on over the summer. And we're incorporating research-based strategies with our ALA in math, and we're doing that really through a teams approach in our hybrid model. Students are working with their classroom teacher in person, and then a specialist, either a special education provider, literacy instruction, or, excuse me, literacy specialist for their virtual core instruction in RTI. So we're taking that team approach to implement that best practice curriculum. We're continuing to use data to guide our instructions, instruction. This year, we have two new benchmarking tools. We're using Ames Web for ALA and NWA for math. Again, it looks different. It's very challenging, as we're realizing, to implement assessments with students who are at home 100% of the time. We're doing it, and we're getting good data back. We're doing that with students when they're here two days a week, and we're using that information to help figure out how to provide the best support possible for students, just as we've done in the past. And we're continuing to work on those differentiated instructional activities to provide. We've tried to focus on providing RTI as well as enrichment, things that were very important to our program in the past. It looks different this year, but we've been able to keep aspects of everything we've done before, and we've been committed to doing that, and that was the model we created, and that's what we continue to work with. We've been adjusting and adapting. We knew when we started in the fall that we were going to have to adjust along the way, and we continue to do that and be open and flexible. And as Scott talked about in his opening, our teachers have been fabulous. Our students have been fabulous. To walk around the elementary buildings and see how well the students have adjusted to the routines, the changes to their schedule, they're very resilient, they're very happy to be at school, and we're very happy to have them there. So that's it with instruction. Now I'm proud to introduce Mark Nelson, principal of Harris Hill.
Good evening. I'm Mark Nelson, the building principal at Harris Hill. I feel like I need to be sworn in. This is a little intimidating, I'm not going to lie to you. Welcome, and thank you, first of all, to the board. It's a pleasure showing you Harris Hill, newer board members, the other day. It was a wonderful walkthrough, and about relationships, right? It's about, and I get to talk about, our commitment to and continuing, under these challenging times, our partnerships with our community. And that's what I'm going to talk about and highlight, and I'm not, I'll just try to keep it brief and highlight some of the things and feed off of some of the things that Scott and the others talked about. It's challenging. Our world is, people are watching us now on TV, and we're doing a lot of Zoom meetings, and yet, over the years, all four of us have forged really wonderful relationships with our community, and we continue to reach out and be part of those, and it's just kind of an abbreviated form right now. Steam up too much, but. The thing that I want to focus on tonight and just bring to light, is what you already know, is the community still wants those relationships. They still want us to move forward. They still want to have those connections with the students inside of our school. So our challenge this year is really trying to continue some of the programs that we started in a virtual world. Our PTA meetings are all held Zoom. We, you know, it's just that we don't have the face-to-face time, and yet, we're still able to bring in and connect with, you know, and do things inside of our school. It does promote a lot of anxiety when you're collecting stuff and you're bringing things into your school, and you know that there's a possibility with all the things that are going on. So we're always trying to weigh out, you know, what can we move forward in a safe manner, and, again, in the hopes that this thing will be over in the relatively near future, that we'll be able to climb back into these relationships and continue this community connection that we know is so critically important to you and to us. It's hard when you don't, this is the first year, and I'll just bring to light, no parents are coming into our buildings. At the elementary level, that's a huge piece for us. We want the parents to come into the buildings. They're the ones creating these wonderful opportunities for students through our PTAs and through our extracurriculars, and those things just aren't happening at the same level. We're trying very hard to continue those, but it is going to be, this is a year where we're going to ask for, and I think we're really talking about maintaining the communication throughout the process. But I don't see, I don't speak for all of us, we just can't maintain it on the same level as we have in the past. But I want to tell you, as a board and the community, that is something that we continue to hold in our hearts. Please do not stop the relationship. Please do, please continue to work with your PTAs, continue to contact us. We want to continue that as we move forward. In the meantime, we're seeking that, seeking the opportunities that are available to us. Twitter, blogs, webpages, Facebook, these are all ways that we communicate. We continue to welcome in your ideas and continue to foster as best we can those relationships. But it has been a challenge as we move forward with the communication, with the community relations, just through the virtual world. Fiscal responsibility, budget. We work together as a team, and we understand it's a different time, and the financial values of the community, the context is always there. We're always working with Tom, we're always working with Jim, and we're sitting down and we're looking at, okay, so what does this year look like? Obviously, you're not sending teachers to conferences, you're not doing some of those things, so where do we redeploy? Where do we look at from a standpoint of what are the materials that we need? Technology being a huge piece of our conversations as we took on the virtual world, we had to shift, and we continue to shift, but we're always looking at it from the perspective of how can we be fiscally responsible to the community and making sure that we're not, you know, we're not spending to spend, that we hold that, you know, hold those conversations with district office, and that we make realistic and, you know, equitable conversations along those lines. But it has forced us to redeploy and reshift that we would in a regular year. But we do, and I want to just leave you with this, we're meeting all the time. The elementary principals are talking all the time. We continue to hold true to our hearts that our commitment to all Penfield is that whatever school you go to, you're going to get a consistent experience curricularly, slightly different culturally. But we also, when I talk about these last two pieces, we feed off of each other. A good program at Cobble's is a good program for Penfield. And so we take it, we, maybe we massage it a little bit and make it our own, but if it's a good idea, we are all, as a team, open to the conversation of how can we use that in our own schools to feed it? Because in the end, they all go to Bay Trail. They all end up at the high school, and we end up, you know, celebrating that graduation when they walk across the stage, they're our students. So again, thank you for all you're doing under these unprecedented times. We know it's difficult, know it's difficult for you, too. We're going to get through it. I keep telling parents when they call, eventually this is going to be over, and we're going to get through it, and we just have to rely on each other and keep talking to each other the best we can. And I think now we can answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Board, any questions for any of the principals? Barb?
I just have a comment. Listening to Dr. Mendoza last week, and with the numbers going up, he, having his press conference, it was interesting and very, I thought, very affirming, when he said that at the very end, the last thing that will close will be the schools, because the schools are doing it right. And I took pride in that as a member of the board, and I just wanted to let you know that I was listening, and I applaud everything that you guys are doing, because it's not easy. And, but the fact that the head of the Department of Health is affirming, you know, what we're doing is right. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope? All right. Well, I would just like to say again, thank you all for coming down. I know every year you do a very in-depth report, which we get to see here beyond what you presented, and this year, again, equally in-depth and adapted to the situation. I also just wanted to mention that, you know, we're doing, as you know, tours of the buildings, and we've been to three of the four elementary schools with the fourth upcoming. And two of them were during times when the kids were in school, and as we walked by, you could see how, for the kids who were in school, how much it seemed as normal as possible, and they were, they seemed to be doing great. And we would walk by the rooms where a teacher was an online teacher, and they were, they had the equipment in front of them, they had the monitors, they could see everything, and they were clearly immersed, and they're, they seemed, and I'm sure it's not easy, but they were, you know, they were fully immersed, and they seemed to be going right along, and we saw them actually doing hands-on activities, you know, on the online thing. So for that, normally doing hands-on activity is hard enough, but to do that when you're on a monitor with kids on that, it's equally hard, but they seem to be just rolling through it. So I'm going to commend everybody for putting this all together, and teachers for adapting to that. to that. So, and again, thank you for the reports.
You know, I can't help but just say a final thank you to this team. I'm just, I know I speak for Barb and Jim, and Dr. Driffl, who's not here this evening, from the senior side of the district, the senior administrators, just, it's nice to work with a team who is devoted to kids first, the fact that all students belong to all of us, and that it's not a competition, although, you know, we do have a healthy competition in our lives about four different elementary schools, but the fact that you really do come together and work together for the best of all students, as Mr. Nelson said, at some point, they all end up becoming Penfield graduates, so they all do trickle up, and I just want to say thank you very much, and make sure you're, you talked a lot about the social emotional wellness of our children, but I would just make sure, I publicly say it also, make sure you're looking out for your staff, which I know you are, but at the same token, look out for yourself as well, and make sure you're taking care of yourself, because there's quite a lot of stress on our administrators during this time, so thanks for everything that you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes special reports.
Special reports.
Yeah, you're not out of the woods with me yet, I got quite a lot to say.
We would feel short-changed if that was all we got. Which brings us to visitor speaking time. Sharon, do we have any speakers today?
No.
No, okay. Well, and we encourage people to come speak, and we read the same thing every time, because people don't, you know, check in, they don't necessarily see every meeting, but we want people to understand how speaking time works, because it is an important part of, you know, our engagement with the community. So this is the designated time for district residents to bring their comments to the board. The board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice concerns, and offer suggestions in a constructive atmosphere. Matters involving particular individuals or specifics of negotiations are not permitted during public session and should be addressed privately with the board president or superintendent. Comments brought to the board will be taken under consideration, however, this is not a time when the board can answer questions or engage in dialogue. A request to speak form must be filled out prior to the start of the meeting and given to the district clerk. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit the total amount of time of visitor speaking based upon the length of the agenda. Written communications to the board are also encouraged. With that, we'll turn it over to Ms. Chakoman, our student representative. Abby?
Hi, everybody. It's that time again. To start things off, at Penfield High School, the robotics team took part in the annual back-to-school food drive at the Penfield Equi-Medical Food Shelf. Many sports had their senior meets, such as the cross-country team and also the swimming teams, and all grade levels are invited to participate in Spirit Month as opposed to Spirit Week. At Bay Trail, students donated an impressive amount in support of breast cancer awareness. At Cobble's, Cobble staff dressed up as healthcare heroes as a way to recognize and honor the work of all frontline workers, and students also painted pumpkin globes at the end of their geography unit. At Indian Landing, fifth graders were comparing and contrasting what they knew about the coronavirus and the Koko Litzli virus during the Aztec period. At Scribner, Mrs. Mattson and some caring students took part in Scribner's annual red tulip planting, and Ms. Plummer's class conducted experiments to learn about the human eye. At Harris Hill, Cluster Three had special visitors one morning from Cuckoo Kangaroo, who sang songs to the students. It was adorable, I watched the video. And students explored the night sky by creating their own constellations with paper cups and flashlights. Lastly, for district-wide news, all schools participated in Red Ribbon Week to promote a drug-free lifestyle. Penfield School District families were encouraged to take part in the United Way's 21-day racial equity challenge to gain a deeper understanding of how racism and inequity affect our lives and our community. The Day of the Dead happened on November 1st to November 2nd. All students had the opportunity to dress up for Halloween, my brother loved that, and a couple of elementary schools had their playgrounds reopened. And lastly, November is Native American Heritage Month, so schools were learning about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you. Which brings us back to Dr. Putnam for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So this evening, we do have a couple student and staff honors. I do have some Penfield Central updates. This is where an opportunity to just be able to share some of these ongoing updates, especially around COVID safety and COVID. Building emergency response plans, we'll talk through these a little bit. They were, we had Mr. Fox and Mr. McNiff present them back in August, but we have to have them board-approved, and I'll talk a little bit about that. And then I'll be filling in for Dr. Driffl tonight, who is unable to be here. Just the budget calendar, which will be a review from the meeting in October that he presented it, and looking for board's approval on our budget calendar for this year. So somehow, I didn't realize until now, I really should have gotten Jim and Barb in on this action, because I'll just be presenting to you all night, so. Couple of happy things is Make a Difference Day. Even in the midst of a COVID pandemic, Penfield students, staff, families participated in the annual Make a Difference Day food drive, collecting hundreds of items for our Penfield food shelf. So kudos to our entire district in the work they did. I will mention too, just as an aside, we talked about partnerships, and the food shelf is definitely looking for more items, especially as we get towards the Thanksgiving season. So as our community, please make sure you reach out and see what you can do to help our local food shelf. Pink the Week fundraiser, in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Bay Trail students participated in Pink the Week Jar Wars contest, and they raised over $800 for the Rochester Breast Cancer Coalition. So kudos to our Bay Trail students in supporting such a great opportunity to come together for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And then, because we love our school board, and we wanted to celebrate School Board Recognition Week longer than just the week it is, as you recall, the books weren't in yet due to some COVID delays, but we have them here for you, gift, a little bow on them, but if you open them up, what's cool is, I believe in the cover is the dedication page that these will go to our school library. So Class Act by Jerry Clark and Under My Hijab by Henna Khan have arrived and will be donated to the elementary school libraries in honor of our board members. So thank you very much, and I just think it's really neat that for years to come, our students who will take out a book will notice a board member and our student representative's name in that book that they take out.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
So on to Penfield updates. I do want to talk a little bit about something we've been talking about since the beginning of the year. The district has, I'm comfortable saying struggled, to find a, the easiest way to do our mandated, required daily student COVID wellness checks. Thanks to Barb Gregory and her office, we have been doing pretty well using Frontline for our staff check-ins, but for our students, it's been very difficult. You know, long story short, people jumped at making apps to try to make it as easy as possible. They're all pretty easy for the parent, speaking from myself as a parent. What's really difficult is then that end user, what report does the staff, who has to verify that every student has had their temperature taken and have answered the wellness check questions by their family, how can they check that? And so, Frontline's not really working for us, because what we get is a PDF, which is very difficult when you're trying to go over 800 high school students in a PDF that you can't really manipulate. So after a lot of consideration, I wanted to say kudos to Jim Pfeifer, and also Nancy Bradstreet, who we've been using Microsoft Forms, and they've worked to build that, and then Nancy updates it every night, we send out emails. And it works, again, pretty easily for families, but those who have been doing it know that you have to actually type your child's last name in, first name in, and then there are a number of, you know, misspellings, or sometimes something doesn't go in right, and so, it's still pretty easy from the parent's side, but again, very, very clunky on the end user to determine and be able to do that. So what we have to do every morning is cross-reference a list of all the kids who should be there that day with the list of all the kids who completed it, and then figure out who didn't. So we've been working and speaking with our peers around the area. The biggest, the biggest and most local district is Webster, uses Pick My Kid. We're going to be rolling out the Pick My Kid app soon, so our goal is before Thanksgiving. But parents will be able to submit their COVID wellness checks each day, either through the app that they download or on the website. If they don't have a smartphone, they want to just do it through the website, the Pick My Kid website, they can. Don't worry about taking notes now, more information, directions, how to set this all up will be coming out soon from the district, and again, we hope to have this, to be, to really start before Thanksgiving is our goal, but we will communicate this many times with our parents. Pick My Kid is an app designed for much more than COVID wellness checks. It was designed truly about picking your child up and dismissal and pickup. So there are lots of things you could do with Pick My Kid. The only thing we're doing with it this year is COVID wellness checks. We've seen it, we've worked now with Webster, and they showed us how they've been using it with a lot of success, and then we met with the Pick My Kid rep. I also wanted to give a thank you, she's not here tonight, but Marty Morrow from District Office has been working diligently with Pick My Kid. It will sync with Infinite Campus, our known system. We are doing the data drop today, it may have been completed by the end of the day, and we're going to be trialing it with internal staff members for a little while and making sure we work things out. But it is really easy from the parent's side of things, and then what's amazing is the end result is our forms that we can manipulate and work through, and instead of, in some cases, our schools, it does take two to three hours to go through those lists, especially at the high school, middle school. We're believing it's going to take about 15 minutes, 30 minutes tops, to determine which students didn't do it, so we can follow the mandated rules and have those, temperature taken of those students who did not fill it out. So this is a lot of work, and you know, look at this as, the board knows, and it's probably sick of me saying it, but I am always going to find a silver lining, and the silver lining is, we didn't just jump into something, we've been taking our time with it, we've been reviewing it, we've been working with districts who are already using it, and we did a review of other apps, similar apps, on which one will simply be the easiest for our families. And the other thing I just mentioned with Pick My Kid is that while it is an app and a webpage, everything we purchase in this, in the situation runs through BOSI's, so it's BOSI's adable, but more important, I think, to our community is that it is education law 2D compliant. And so there's that new law the board created a policy for, we're really focused in about student privacy, data privacy, and all of that has to meet the very strong New York State education law, and because we're buying it through BOSI's, they verify that these contracts are all supported under that law. And so I do think as a parent with students, that the data's safe, it meets all the very strict rules that New York State put forth, and I looked at Jim, who was our 2D expert, but I feel pretty comfortable with Pick My Kid. So again, just stay tuned for that, but I'm hoping that it'll be helpful, and as I mentioned, it has lots of other options, we're only using it for COVID now, because it really is a pretty synced situation, I think it'll work well.
Can we just add to the fan views?
Please.
The folks in the buildings who have been, day after day now, for going on three months, manually poring over reports of attendance lists and these, the reports of who has completed the form, who hasn't, and then making sure that those students have been checked and are okay to be in our buildings.
Yeah.
Tom mentioned how grueling that process is, but a thank you to them for doing it day after day until we get this app rolling.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, and, you know, we could keep going, but the nurses too, who are...
Yes, the nurses who follow up everybody.
Truly following up with every student, but it really is, it goes back to what our elementary principals were saying earlier, this team effort, and sometimes during such crises as a pandemic, you really see the team come together, and I've just been, I think we all agree, just been amazed at what happens during such a difficult time. So thank you, Jim, for sharing that, I don't want to leave anybody out. Another just update around COVID, and actually, Barb, Abbi, ours and I could go on the road because it's a perfect segue, I almost jumped in to say this when you talked about Dr. Mendoza's press conference, but I just want to share with the community that our district in building safety protocols are working as intended. And while Monroe County is seeing an uptick in positive COVID cases and individuals being put under quarantine, as a district and a community, we really, this is the time to really follow those precautions, you know, I mean, it's been eight months, it's starting to feel a little bit redundant, but now's the time to just remind ourselves, our kids, as Mr. Elge said, our students, if you go into the building, are amazing. I don't think you can, honestly, they roll with it so much better than adults, like me. You know, I mean, they wear the mask, they follow the mask breaks, it's amazing. But one of the things Dr. Mendoza has said to superintendents is that we are, as a county, the gold standard of COVID precautions. They're not seeing the spread in schools. Even if there is a positive case of a student or an adult, they're not seeing any contact tracing back in the schools, because we're wearing masks, we're six feet apart. And so it's pretty amazing to see that, that what's happening with this uptick is things happening outside of school. Not even our athletics are causing an issue as the fall season started, but it is, it is events outside of school that we, as a board and as a superintendent, can't control, and so just asking the community to please be diligent with this. And so I also want to just touch upon a rumor and just mention that there are no plans to close schools, but lots of rumors. So I've heard all the rumors, we're closing after Thanksgiving, we're closing on January 1st, we've closed yesterday, but we're not telling anybody, so lots of rumors, but that's why it's in bold, no plans to close schools, lots of rumors. If you feel like you heard something, feel free to email me directly, reach out, but I can tell you now that superintendents continue to meet with members of the Department of Health, including Dr. Mendoza, and as of today, there are, there is no plan, there's no secret plan, I can't say it enough, and I do answer that question about a dozen times a day, 11 of them in Wegmans. So I guess, you know, we don't know though, we don't know what will happen. If we do close, if that does happen, our plan is to keep the hybrid schedule in place. So we will get this out to families as we get a little closer, but if we close, we probably will not know how long that closure is, so don't expect a major shift in the instruction if we're only going to be closed for a week or two weeks. We'll obviously be reviewing and monitoring, but we will get something out to the community at the end of this week, or Monday at the latest, just a reminder about that and about snow days, because this year, snow days will be asynchronous learning days, and we'll share that with our staff, which is aware, but explain what that would look like. So the other piece is the survey data, we had Mr. Marriott here last week presented, sorry, two weeks ago, presented on the survey data. Just wanted to let the board and community know that the buildings are working through that survey data with their faculty and staff. Survey data was gathered from parents and guardians, students and teachers. We're continuing to monitor and address stakeholder feedback and suggestions, and we take that very seriously. I believe you heard from the elementary principals, we talked about as well, the feedback coming in and trying to work as a team to address the concerns as they come forward. And then, just as a reminder, our 21-day Equity Challenge, I'm very proud of this district to be a partner with the United Way. Today is day eight, and if you go to the webpage, this is, the slide is actually right from their webpage, we're on day eight now, but if for some reason you didn't sign up, or you're interested, or you feel like you missed an email, I'll be honest, some of the emails go to my junk folder every once in a while, not every day, but some days, and so I have changed, instead of waiting for the email, I go online each morning, and you can see what every day is, click it, and you'll see everything for the 21-day Equity Challenge. So please visit www.uwrochester.org, UW meaning United Way, very easy, it's the first page when you get there, and some really amazing things in there, lots of great learning, and I wanted to say thank you to our PTAs and PTO's who have been working to set up some Zoom meetings, so parents and community members can discuss and debrief what they're learning through the 21-day Equity Challenge. Any questions on my Penfield Central School District, AKA COVID updates?
Board, any questions? Tom?
Hold on one second.
Was that?
Oh, that was me. Tom, I hate to go back to anything about... Tom, I hate to go back to anything about rumors.
No problem.
But just to clarify, you said that we would stay with the hybrid model. Okay, is, has there been an actual discussion about if there were, if there were to be an upcoming closure, it would be for a specific period of time? Because when this hit last time, it was open-ended and nobody knew anything.
Yeah.
But then you said we're going to keep the hybrid going because the assumption, I guess, would be that it would be for a week or two. Has there been any actual talk about that?
No, there's been no actual talk.
Okay.
Where the two weeks, one week to two weeks comes from is if a school has to quarantine. So if it got to a point where an entire school had to quarantine, it would probably be a 10-day closure.
Yeah.
So it would be two weeks.
Okay.
And we wouldn't want to completely revisit any sort of major instructional upheaval for two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
I will say that I have, I was not as positive as back in August on how long we'd stay open. The fact that it's November 3rd and we have had a handful of cases, which we email out about, we haven't had one in a while. But again, we're, we're working through with the Department of Health, contact tracing is working, and I feel very hopeful that we will make it through.
Yeah.
I think the rumors around Thanksgiving really come from some local colleges who are deciding to go virtual after break because kids are coming home and then going back to campus.
Right.
Whether living together in dorms, much closer than what we're doing in schools.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm holding out and hopeful, but with everything, we'll communicate with our community directly if anything changes.
Yeah, I think it's.
But a number of districts have put things out. We'll, we'll be talking about putting something out either this Friday or Monday. I had a meeting this evening before this with superintendents just around the fact that all of us are hearing rumors within our community that the closure date is, is coming. And we're, we're saying we have had none of those meetings.
Yeah.
So wherever these secret meetings are on Facebook, we are not involved in those rumors.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? So I had a couple, Tom. You know, one is you were talking about the, you know, getting the temperature checks, getting the surveys, having to check, then check through that. Are we, is the district required to send any of this data to the SED? And were you required to report or itemize or just basically say we did it?
So we, Jim thanked the folks in the building who have been looking through the data, and so I will give the shout out to our nurses and to Scott Dreschler. But our nurses are, every day, there is a dashboard, a COVID dashboard, and every day they need to go in before 4:00 PM and submit our data for the day. What they're really collecting is not who filled out the form, they're collecting who went homesick, who had a positive test, if there was a positive test through the Department of Health. When did they return? They change that dashboard and what they ask our nurses to submit. I would say every few days, there's a new question added or a change in a question. So they've been doing incredible work with that. And, and in terms of what we have to collect for the data on temperature taking, no, we do not have to share that in any form with the state, although we keep all of that data just, just for our knowledge.
Okay, so the dashboard is an aggregate?
Yeah, the dashboard is an aggregate and it goes by building, and you can actually go to the New York State website and view every district's data in terms of how many cases they have for positive or quarantine.
Great. And I guess, that's, I think, all I have right now, so.
I'm here all night.
So am I. I'll have to think of it when I.
No problem. So just, this is brief, but the building emergency response plans, I have two slides. The first is just as a reminder, back in August, the board approved the district emergency response plan, and Alan McNiff and Brandon Fox were here. The district is also required to complete updated building-specific emergency response plans on a yearly basis and submit those to the New York State Safe Schools. The plans must be formally adopted by the board as well. So this process is Brandon Fox, our Security and Preparedness Manager, updates all of the building plans, then he meets with each building team to go over the details and any changes that are made. And then through an online process, through the New York State Business Portal, we're required to update and submit specific information about our building emergency response plans. This was required and submitted before October 15th. They then sometimes will kick it back and say you need to make some changes, which happened to just about every district, including us. We made those changes and then resubmitted, and it was approved. So the status here is each building has been updated on the emergency response plans. The building emergency response teams and staff directories were changed, 23 threat hazard annexes were added, and those 23 threat hazard annexes were pulled directly from the district-wide safety plan. And we've completed the information required on the New York State Business Portal and submitted as per their requirements. We also provide the copies of our specific building emergency response plans to local law enforcement. So the Monroe County Sheriff and the Brighton Police both have our plans. So in case there ever was an emergency in one of our buildings, they know our protocols, they know every individual, the cell numbers for those individuals, and have everything they need to be an incredible partner in such a situation. And then the final requirement is that it has to be Board of Ed adoption of the building emergency response plans, which will happen, happen later in this meeting. Any questions on our building emergency response plans?
Board, any questions? I think we're all set.
I will just say thank you to both Brandon Fox and Alan McNiff for incredible work around that, and of course, all of our building teams. So this is our budget calendar presentation. Dr. Driffler is unable to be here this evening. He sends his regards. I know he would like to be here. The calendar is, is in, later you'll see it as sort of a approval that the board is approving the calendar. We haven't in the past approved the budget calendar, but Dr. Driffler, being new, wanted to make sure that the board had a voice in this, which I appreciate very much. I know the board does too. This calendar, as we've talked about, is a little different than how we've done it in the past, but meets every legal requirement that we have to go through. And so these slides walk through basically each board meeting and what will be shared. The board will continue to receive a lot of information in your board packets as we hit these dates. And then Dr. Driffler will do overview presentations for the board and our community. And then as we get through to, towards the end, in February, we'll be able to see sort of a first draft of the entire budget, which is a little different than we've done before. It's a little earlier. And then we'll walk through to get down to that final full budget document posted in the budget presentation with all the legal requirements available back down, as we get down to April and May. And so I would just like to share with the board that while this calendar is different than what we've done before, as always, please, if you want to see something, you're interested in something, you've got just curiosity around, around a budget issue that you've had before or you have now, don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. We'll get Dr. Driffler to, you know, put something together and we can update the board either through Friday notes, through a board presentation, through email, whatever works. And the same is true with the community as we get into the budget presentations. If they have questions, like we always say every year, is they can reach out directly to me, they can reach out to our business official, this year being Dr. Driffler, and we'll work through and make sure that we're as transparent as possible. And I'm sure when people have questions, we want to make sure they feel comfortable. Any questions on, on that?
Board? I think we're all set.
That's the end of superintendent reports, but I really enjoyed talking so much, so I thought I'd tell you some stories.
[laughter]
No, I won't. I'm well done. That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, I think that brings us to Section 5A, which is the facilities and the building emergency response plan that Tom just explained to us. The, every school district is required by NYCRR, Section 155.17, to have a building-specific emergency response plans and to ensure the safety and health of the children and the staff, as well as to ensure integration, coordination with similar emergency planning at the municipal, county, and state levels. The building-level safety plans are amended annually to include the update with new staff names and roles, as well as other relevant contact information. The building emergency response plans have been updated and submitted to the New York State and Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the Brighton Police Department. We have a motion and a second that the building emergency response plans be amended as described, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that the building response plan amendments described above be approved.
Some. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Which brings us to policy. And we have three policies for second review and approval. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policies as presented. They are the 6140 health examinations, 6151 drug-free workplace, and 6211 recruitment. We have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented.
Some will.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And now that brings us to the budget calendar. It is recommended, it is recommended that the board approve the 20, 21, 22 budget calendar as presented on October 6th initially, and then just again, as Tom just did for us. So we have a motion and a second that the board approve the calendar as presented.
Some will.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And so that brings us to the Monroe County School Board Association Committee meetings. We had the Labor Relations Meeting on October 21st. Someone wanted to speak to that?
I would love to speak on it, but I didn't attend because I wasn't feeling well. Sorry.
Oh, well.
That's okay. We also have the Legislative Committee Meeting coming up tomorrow. And Catherine, thank you for sending out that reminder to everybody that this is the regents.
Yes, the two for our area, Wade Norwood and Brown, is it Andrew Brown, I believe, Vice Chancellor Brown. And so they'll be there.
So there's been meetings in the past, I know with, you know, with a number of representatives, including the regents, but this is the first time I think they've ever come to our Legislative Committee Meeting that I can recall.
Yeah, that I know of too, for sure.
And, and we, Catherine and myself are the representatives, but they are open to all the board members. So we hope that if anyone's interested, please.
Yeah, it's a little late now because they needed, I mean, if you want to, let me know. Okay, but it was a question of seating because of the social distancing, and so they had to have that prepared.
Should I have come first?
Okay. All right.
And we also had the conclusion of the New York State School Board Association Annual Convention and Expo. This was a virtual meeting expo that normally we, it's, we go to the location, which was going to be New York City. This was virtually, it was held October 20th through 22nd, and then 27th through 29th, plus the annual business meeting was held in October 31st. That is where resolutions put forward, get voted upon by the, by all the school board's representatives, which become part of our platform as to what we want the state legislature and the governor to, to act upon on our behalf. So would anyone like to speak to the convention or the business meeting?
I can talk about the business. Go ahead. No, no, please.
I've listened to, I don't know, three or four sessions so far. I got to hear the regents speak and the new interim commissioner, so that was a good session. And there's a whole, there's a mental health section and, and there's an equity section. So I'll send you guys, I saw a really great recording of the equity section because I think they're available through the end of December.
I believe so, yes.
So maybe we want to do something after that so we have time to all, you know, kind of look at some different things. But I can send you some of the ones that I looked at, but I thought they were.
Sure.
You know, they were good. Yeah, I mean, what I've seen so far, so.
Good, good.
To the business meeting, the, it was, there's a lot, a lot of representatives, 222 delegates, I think was at the highest. There was a little bit of concern early on about a quorum, but a lot of lively discussion, but really fell along the same lines that we would have had in the resolutions meeting prior. And actually, there's quite a bit more discussion about the non-recommended, some of the non-recommended resolutions. But overall, it really kind of felt, there were no surprises. It felt pretty much the way that it did in our resolution meeting.
Yeah.
So it's long. It was definitely slower, I think, it's like four and a half hours, so. But they did a good job running, I mean, doing the best they could to make sure that everybody was able to speak. And the voting was actually really interesting because it was all right in front of you and you can just click on it, and then they gave you the results after, so. So there's some really good things about it, too.
You didn't have your little panel?
No, no.
You pulled your little panel up in the Zoom window?
Felt a little like a game show, though. You know, one gentleman has like a really good game show voice, I can't think of the name off the top of his head, but, and then seeing all those, I'm like, wait a minute, is this like Hollywood Squares? My grandmother's like, this is 1980.
Was Charlie Weaver there?
Yeah. Wow. My brain had to go through a Rolodex. We found it.
And we haven't, I think this year, of course, this year was so, such an anomaly, but we have put resolutions before in the past, you know, as part of the business meeting in the past. And I'll just remind people that we can still do that. It is a very early cycle, so it's the kind of thing, if we, as you think about it, we should start talking about it because really, springtime is when you have to get those things all, we have to, we have to start writing it up and getting it going. Not that we have to, but if anyone has, sees something that the state could do for us or to make our lives easier, and there's probably a few things they could do to make our lives easier, we should, we should discuss it.
That's a great idea.
So there's no unfinished business. Is there any new business? Seeing none. It would be appropriate to have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at, I don't see what time it is here.
8:09.
8:09.
8:09.
Some moved. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.